Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call to order this meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees on October the 22nd, 2020 at 5:01 PM. Due to health and safety concerns related to the COVID-19 coronavirus, this meeting will be conducted by video conference or telephone call. At least a quorum of the board will be participating by video conference or telephone conference in accordance with the provision of Sections 551.125 or 551.127 of the Texas Government Code that have been suspended by order of the Governor. All or some trustees and limited staff may be together while maintaining proper social distancing at Room 301A in the MacBurn Professional Development Center. Due to ongoing safety concerns, all open meeting proceedings will be live broadcast, but members of the public will be limited in the MacBurn Professional Development Center pursuant to state guidelines and regulations, and all persons will be required to comply with state and district guidelines and regulations. Members of the public may access this meeting via AISD website at www.aisd.net. The Board of Trustees on October 22nd, 2020, beginning at 5:02 PM, will convene in closed session pursuant to Sections 551.071 through 551.084 of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act for the topics set forth on our agenda. We will reconvene in an open meeting at approximately 6:00 PM. At this time, I will reconvene in open session the meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for October 22nd, 2020 at 6:15 PM. We will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Mr. Hogg in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Please make sure that all of your cell phones and electronic devices are off to avoid any disruptions to those around you. And now if you would please join me in a moment of silence. Now we come to the part of our agenda for our open forum for agenda items. As stated on the posted agenda, members of the public who desire to address the board regarding an item on this agenda are required to register by sending an email to the Superintendent of School Secretary L. Benjamin at AISD.net no later than 3:00 PM the day of the board meeting. Mrs. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding agenda items?
President Mays, we have Wendy Espña that was registered to speak, but my understanding is that she's not yet logged into the board meeting.
Okay. Any other requesters?
We have one for the second open session at toward, at the end of the board meeting and action items, and that will be Mr. Stephen Poole.
Okay, so we will move forward in the agenda. Next on the agenda are our action items. Action item A, Consider 2021 Legislative Agenda. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays, and we had an opportunity with the Governance Committee to review the legislative agenda, and then ultimately that came to the board as discussion last board meeting. And so I'll ask Mr. Chapa, the Chair of the Governance Committee, to make some comments.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos and President Mays. At this time, I think every trustee has had a copy of the revised legislative agenda for 2021, so I will just open it up to questions and comments from my colleagues in response to our revised draft.
I'll just have one.
Yes, Dr. -- Mr. Hogg?
Thank you, President Mays. This is a great legislative agenda. Good job to the committee and all the work that goes into this. Mr. Chapa, let me ask you the question. I think it's a simple answer. On section, the very last page, number six, and it's off at number six, authorize ISD to establish virtual instruction distance learning exclusive of the restrictions. Is this where we think we're asking for things that we're doing right now with COVID, like attendance counting for someone to be at home? You know, the discussion point is, do we ever need, you know, inclement weather days again built in because now if you can do it virtually? Do you think that is the section that covers that to get some of these items we've done? I know we asked for, in this agenda, board meetings to be able to be conducted as they've changed now and taken, you know, anytime there's a crisis, you find things that work well. Is that some of those? So then if we do have a student that's sick and they need to be still learning, there's somehow they can still do it at home, log in, do their assignments. Is that where we're asking for that? I know it's a big ask, but is that where we consider asking for that?
Yeah, I would put that under this umbrella. I mean, the main thrust of this particular bullet item is so that we have more flexibility as a district to offer virtual instruction as a, as a more ongoing, long-term option for some families who have been requesting it that otherwise might go to the established statewide virtual
Exactly.
-- program right now. We'd like to keep them here, but I would put, I would put all of that under this umbrella of we're asking for more flexibility to do online and virtual learning because I think for, I think COVID-19 has shown that there are some positives that have come out of that, and it works for some families, and it could work for students on a temporary basis even if they don't want to do it as a permanent learning platform.
Perfect. That's what I needed, and I think that's a great answer. And I would encourage us, you know, with some legislators, we got to keep it short and simple and sweet, and this is a good legislative agenda. As we always list, list the unfunded mandates that they always list, but I'd also say things that we think have been temporary changes for COVID. We bring those to the legislature for this upcoming session. If there's ever a time to get it potentially permanent, especially things that don't cost money or could eventually be cost savings, I think this is the session to really bring those things up. So great legislative agenda. Thanks for all the work.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg.
Do I have a motion? Any other questions? Okay, do I have a motion?
Okay, if there are no other comments or questions, President Mays, at this time I'll move that we adopt the 2021 legislative agenda as discussed.
I second that motion.
Okay, so we've got a motion by Justin, Mr. Chapa, and a second by Ms. Walton. Since this meeting is being conducted virtually, our vote will be a roll call. I will start to my left and just move right across to my right, so please state your name and your vote, either yes if you are for of the motion or no if you are not in favor. Mr. Will Banks?
David Will Banks, I vote yes.
Ms. Walton?
Polly Walton, I vote yes.
Mr. Hogg?
Booby Hogg, I vote yes.
Mrs. Fowler?
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Mr. Chapa?
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Kishmae's, I vote yes. All vote in the affirmative, motion passes. Okay, next action item is Consider a Resolution and an Easement for a Permanent Sewer Line Facility. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays, and this is a consideration for the board, for a resolution for this easement as described on, in the board agenda. We recommend the board approve these.
Is there any discussion, any questions? If not, do I have a motion?
Yes, Ms. Mays. I move to approve the proposed resolution granting the City of Fort Worth the easement and the attached, the resolution to the minutes.
I'll second it.
Okay, so I've got a motion by Mr. Will Banks, a second by Mrs. Fowler. Any discussion?
One real quick.
Yes, sir. Mr. Hogg?
Yeah, and Dr. Cavassos, let me ask real quick on this easement. This is that little weird section that we still have a piece of Fort Worth
Yes.
-- that's in AISD. So those houses in that new development that come in, will those be Fort Worth houses? Because I think we have very few Fort Worth houses, City of Fort Worth houses that are AISD zone. Will those be City of Fort Worth zone, City of Fort Worth but AISD houses because of the easement, or is it just that slice of property that's AISD land?
Yeah, so this is on the 70-plus acres, right? Green Oaks and 303 were
Right.
-- future high school type, potentially. And so I'm not sure on the new development because the boundaries are
Because that's the one right across, so I think, okay.
Right, but we can check.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Any other discussion? If not, we had a motion and a second. Mr. Will Banks, how about you?
David Will Banks, I vote yes.
Ms. Walton?
Polly Walton, I vote yes.
Mr. Hogg?
Booby Hogg, I vote yes.
Mrs. Fowler?
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Mr. Chapa?
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Kishmae's, I vote yes. All vote in the affirmative, the motion passes. Okay, next we move to discussion action items. First item, Consider 202021 District Improvement Plan Goals and Performance Objectives. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays, and this evening we bring our DIP, or District Improvement Plan Goals and Performance Objectives. This is something that we bring that then yields the work of campus planning and things like that. You've heard last board meeting, a presentation about our literacy goals and our math goals as part of a state requirement. So this is the DIP. So at this time, I will ask Dr. Wertz to take us through the District Improvement Plan Goals and Objectives. Dr. Wertz?
Good evening, President Mays, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. This evening I'm going to be sharing with everyone the goals and performance objectives that are being proposed for this year's District Improvement Plan. And I thought I would start off by sharing our purpose with the District Improvement Plan. As everyone knows, our purpose really is to leverage the plan to guide our school district and staff in the improvement of student performance for all of the student groups that we, that we provide instruction to and to help them attain the state standards with respect to its specific achievement indicators. And the goals that I'll be sharing with you today are basically the specific performance objectives around our strategies that are connected to our campus improvement plans as well as our strategic plan. What, what I think is important to note is that they're connected also deeply to the House Bill III plans, which we shared at the last board meeting, and the disaggregation of those goals based by student subgroups. As a school board, you adopted one goal, an equity goal, that's focused on 100% of our students graduating exceptionally prepared for college career and citizenship. And really, this is an equity goal, and it's really connected to the way that we approached our district improvement planning process this school year. You've seen many of these kinds of slides before, but I like this one specifically because it distinguishes the difference between equality and equity, and really this desire to try to provide students specifically what, what the things that they need in order to be successful. And as I go through the process today of explaining a little bit about our approach towards district improvement planning process for this plan, our intent was specifically to try to understand what kids were struggling with and how we could help them improve in their areas of achievement. And this is all centered around this concept of continuous improvement. So as a team, we've talked a lot about this concept, and I thought I would just break it down into very simple terms that we've shared with our campus principals just to help everyone understand how aligned we are trying to work in terms of identifying specifically what the challenges the kids are having in comparison to what we're actually working to achieve in our actions. This is a very typical graph that you would see or chart that you would see, which articulates what the continuous improvement process looks like, where you identify your opportunities to grow, you make your plans, you execute those plans, and you review to see if those plans are actually resulting in improvement. And the way that we kind of have been explaining this to staff is pretty simple, and we kind of have been using this metaphor of going to a doctor's office. So if you're a patient and you have a symptom, what you typically would do is go to the doctor's office, and one of the things a doctor may do is draw blood to really try to understand and analyze the data to get a sense of what your diagnosis may be in relationship to your symptoms. And once the doctor looks at the data, he or she will use that data to create a diagnosis and then prescribe medication or remedy to address that diagnosis. And the important thing to note about the remedy is that the science has already proven that if, if, if the, if the remedy is taken or the medication is taken at the prescribed dosage for the prescribed amount of time, there is evidence that it would actually help the patient. And so if the patient leverages this prescription and, and does it as described, then after so many weeks, the doctor may have you come back into the office to redraw blood to see if there's actually been improvement made into your, in your situation after being using the medication. And if, if, if no improvement has been made, then some of the questions the doctor may first ask is, are you taking the prescription? And if the answer is no, he or she may say, well, let's, let's do the, let's use the prescription the way it was prescribed, and then come back and see if it works. If the answer is yes, then he or she may try to adjust the plan or maybe look for a different treatment plan if it's not working. Our approach to school improvement is also very similar in that we're trying to approach it from a more scientific way of looking at things. So as you know, one of our strong focus areas over the last couple of years is specifically around reading. And so we've been looking at our data to try to understand what challenges students are experiencing with reading and evaluating the reading and achievement data to try to get a sense of what specific portions of the building blocks of literacy are actually causing stumbling situations for kids. So as a district or as teachers, we leverage this data to try to diagnose what that challenge is and then prescribe or administer specific interventions to address the diagnosis and then reevaluate the data as the students continue to learn and make adjustments accordingly so that they can continue on a positive trajectory. This is basically the continuous improvement process, and we've tried to do this exact process as we've been building our improvement plans in the system. You have seen this model before developed by Dr. Barlow in the Research Accountability Office, and this in essence describes in a more scientific way, so to speak, what I was just giving as a metaphor for going to the doctor, where you have input, you, you might have a specific challenge that you're experiencing, you provide, you're provided specific strategies to work on those, on those challenges, and then we measure the progress that you're making or not making based on the implementation of those strategies and the ultimate result that you have. When you translate this, this actual process into a district improvement plan, which is the sample I'm providing here on the slide, you read it in a very specific way. The performance objectives, which is what I'm going to talk about tonight, are the specific outcomes that we're looking for. The actual strategies to improve the process, or what I would call the prescriptions, are described under the strategy description. And then the process measures, which we call on the District Improvement Plan Strategy or Expected Results or Impact, is the part where the doctor would say, is the prescription making a difference or not? Is it being, is it being taken as prescribed? And then what's the impact it's actually having? So we would measure, is the strategy that we're trying to implement in the system being implemented with fidelity? And if so, what impact is it actually having on student outcomes? So tonight what I wanted to share with you specifically were the goals for 2020, and then when we come back in November, I'll articulate all the specific strategies that we're leveraging across the system to accomplish these goals. And the ultimate result of all of this is that our students walk away from high school exceptionally prepared as we define by acquiring what we call life-ready skills and the acquisition of either a high school diploma and/or workforce cert. So I found this quote that I really liked by Margaret Fuller that says, "Today, a reader and tomorrow a leader," and I think it really gets the essence of what many of our plans are in terms of working with students this school year. When I come back in November and share with you the strategies, you're going to see a robust number of strategies specifically connected to reading. We know that students who can read well do well in each of their content areas. And so these are our performance objectives. You will notice that there are three goals, and they're connected to three specific areas within the strategic plan. One is academic achievement, one is college readiness, and one is workforce readiness. And some of these goals will sound very familiar because they are directly aligned to the House Bill III targets that we presented at the last board meeting. And one thing that I think that's important to note is we've been really focused on going deep and narrow rather than broad and shallow. So when you get an opportunity to look over the specifics of the campuses and district improvement plans that we'll share with you in November, you'll notice that our strategies are intended to not flood the system with trying to have teachers improve everything all at once, but to focus their efforts on a few things and to do those things well. So the first performance objective is that all of our students, K through 12, will improve their performance in reading and as measured by STAR and EOC, and we will improve from 70 to 71. And that specifically for approaches, 43 to 44 for meets and 18 to 19 for masters. I do want to highlight that this is one goal over a five-year period, so slowly over five years, the goal would be to see these things move close to 10 points. The ISIP score, which is actually a score that comes from our screener for IStation, will be leveraged to monitor primary grade students' progress towards mastery in, in terms of readiness of their achievement when they actually take the STAR test in third grade, which is what this House Bill III goal is actually focused on. The second performance objective specifically is related to math and our, our targets for students in K through 12 to improve their math performance on STAR and EOC with the math inventory surveying as a progress measure to move from 78 to 79, 47 to 48 in meets, and then of course 23 to 24 in masters. And then the last two goals are specifically around college readiness and workforce readiness. And I acknowledge that on this slide, they read exactly the same because it looks like we're saying the same goal twice. The reason that's the case is because CCMR or college career military readiness are kind of clumped together in one category, but when you break those out into strategies, one area specifically is focused on college readiness, particularly in areas of advanced academics and dual credit, and another area is really about making sure that students have the support they need to be ready to sit for their workforce cert exams and actually pass them. So our recommendation is that the board approve and adopt the proposed 2021 DIP goals and performance objectives. And as I said, next month I'll return with the strategies and provide everyone with a preview of all the specific things we're going to do to move those targets. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. Are there any questions of trustees? And if so, just raise your hand. Yes, Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Mays. Dr. -- is my mic working?
There it is.
Dr. Wertz, thanks for the presentation, and I want to go back to something that you mentioned, that this is part of a long-term goal of raising our academic performance by 10 points over five years. Is that, did I hear you correctly?
That's our target specifically related to House Bill III, which will translate into future goals. We will set the, the finalized target for the overall K through 12 when we need to start strategizing around the next strategic plan. As you know, the current one actually expires, but the, the House Bill III third grade goals are, will increase over the next five years by 10 points, and the numbers that I share with you tonight are virtually a mirror of that. So our anticipation is that that will be the case. It will vary a little bit once we include all of K through 12, but in essence, that's about right.
Okay, I was looking at the specific performance objectives, and maybe I'm conflating two different things. I wonder if you could clarify.
Okay.
So you mentioned that for this year, we want to increase on the performance on ISIP STAR and EOC for literacy, going from 70 to 71 approaches, 43 to 44 in 18 and 19 in the masters. So we're going over five years. I assume we're going to kind of backwait on the later years, greater
Yeah.
-- incremental growth.
Well, what you'll find, and this is the same with House Bill III, is you don't really go 1% each year. Some, some, some years you'll increase by a couple of percent growth, and then some years you'll, you'll increase by one. And the reason that's the case is because as we monitor our primary grades, the goal is that the number of students that are prepared to meet standard, which is the meets area, will gradually increase, and so as those cohorts start to move into the system, the numbers will start to accelerate. So you'll start seeing, you'll start seeing more than like 1% growth over the course of the year. You might see two or three, but so they won't look, I guess, mirrored exactly the same each of the five years if that makes sense.
Yes. Certainly does. My second question was, given that we know there's going to be a COVID slide in both our early childhood literacy and numeracy, what accommodations have you made for that reality in, in our five-year plan?
So that's a really good question, and it's difficult to answer if I'm being frank only because we still are trying to assess what that actually means. What we have done is we have, in the primary grades, we have, Dr. Barlow's team has created a model that allows us to equate where students are in kinder, first, and second grade in terms of cut points that they would need to meet in order to project them to be ready for third grade. And so what we've done as a team is we've, we've set targets by trying to look at what the baseline would be. So for example, we might say there are X, Y percentage of kindergarten students that are currently meeting the baseline that would project them to reach the approaches standard when they get to third grade. And so we are going to track a percentage of growth of that population of students from one point to the next in terms of beginning of the year, middle of the year. The other thing that I would say too is ISIP, for example, measures students' reading progress on five levels. One of, we're trying to triangulate the progress of primary grade students by not only looking at what, what percentage of students are actually making progress towards reaching those cut points, but what percentage of students are actually making growth in two late levels. So for example, if I'm a level one at the beginning of the year, do I move to at least a level three by the end of the year? If I'm a level three, do I move to a five? If I'm a two, do I move to that kind of thing? Because one of the things that we, we talked about is if I can look at the data for primary grade students from a few different lenses, I can get a better sense about how they're progressing, what adjustments we need to make. One thing that you don't see on the slides today, but you will see them in November, is how we're trying to do that. So one of the things we know in Arlington that students struggle with in primary grades is phonics and phonemic awareness. Our data shows that that's persistent from grade level to grade level. So you're going to see that one of our targets specifically is around the implementation of the phonics instructional kits that we purchased as resources for all primary grade teachers as part of our adoption. And what we're going to do over the course of the next year is track the implementation of those kits and watch specifically the areas on the ISIP screener that phonics are addressed in the screener to see if those specific building blocks on the screener are moving or not. And that would tell us, one, is the strategy being implemented with fidelity, and two, what impact does it have on reading? Because if the phonics gets better, then we assume that other scores are actually going to come as a consequence. So that's just like a quick sample about how we're kind of monitoring, or hyper-monitoring primary grades this year in a way that we haven't done in the past as a, as a response to this, this target in third grade.
That's great to hear that we're using this kind of micro targets in between to intervene as early as possible. And you mentioned ISIP on the literacy side. Is math inventory just the equivalent on the numeracy side for the early grades? And how do those two platforms compare in terms of giving us that critical early data broken down?
Yeah. So there, it's a screener, and it actually looks at several different categories in math, just like you would look at building blocks for reading. On the ISIP side, the math inventory does an inventory of how kids are performing in the various areas of mathematics, like algebraic reasoning, graphing, geometry, things like that. And so what will happen is when kids perform in, by taking the screener in math and will get cut scores, we'll also be able to see what areas specific kids are struggling with and how that's related to strategies that we have on our plan. So it is a screener. It functions very much like ISIP in terms of what it's intended to do. The visualization of the data looks a little bit different, but what Dr. Barlow's team is doing is integrating the data from both ISIP and the math inventory into what we're, basically the, the reporting system that we have for all principals to use, which will tell principals specifically which kid, which kids and what percentage of the kids on their campus are actually meeting the targets needed to reach the goal.
I appreciate your answers, and, and I'll turn it back over to my colleagues for any other questions. Thanks. Thanks again, Dr. Wertz.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Any other trustees with questions or discussion? Any other trustees with questions or discussion? Okay, seeing none, this is a discussion action item, so if someone would like to make a motion, we do have that option based on the recommendation.
President Mays, I'd like to make the motion. I move to approve and adopt the proposed 2020, 2021 district improvement plan goals and performance objectives.
Okay. Got a motion made by Ms. Fowler. I'll hear a second. Second by Mr. Will Banks. Okay, we will now vote. Mr. Will Banks.
David Will Banks, I vote yes.
Ms. Walton?
Polly Walton, I vote yes.
Mr. Hogg?
Billy Hogg, I vote yes.
Mrs. Fowler?
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Mr. Choppa?
Justin Choppa, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes. The motion passes in the affirmative. Next discussion action item is reopening schools for the 2020-21 plan update. Any motions that may come thereof? Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays, and this is an item we bring every board meeting to update the board on our school operations and instructional delivery during these times. So we have a brief presentation by Dr. Tracy Brown. So, Dr. Brown, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, President Mays, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos. Thank you for this opportunity to provide a brief return-to-school update for the board today. But today, our topics are going to be enrollment and attendance update. We'll do an in-person learning update, which is really centered around grading guidance, as well as close out with AISD and Tarrant County COVID data information for you this evening. So as usual, we begin with our AISD guiding principles. Again, flexibility and grace has been an undergird of everything that we've done, every decision we've made as a system. We ask for flexibility and grace, and we certainly extend that to our counterparts. Stakeholder input, prioritizing the health and safety of all of our students and staff members, making sure that we're providing educational equity, which is access to resources and rigorous learning for all of our students, whether it's in-person or it's virtual learning. Our enrollment update, we continue to share this information with you. We are now at ninety-six point six percent of our projected enrollment, with a little over fifty-seven thousand students enrolled in Arlington. As you know, we began our in-person learning just a couple, almost two weeks ago, and so far, we have about fifty-five percent of our students who are attending in-person learning and forty-five percent virtual. And of course, by campus, that does -- it does fluctuate depending on the campus, what percentage of students are attending in-person. We want to provide you an overview of where we are as a system. So now talking about in-person learning, during our last board update, we talked about grading guidance, and we talked about Project PASS, and we talked about Great Redemption and Great Recovery. We thought it'd be important to share with you our failure rates in comparison from last year to this year for elementary through high school, and you will see there is a change in that failure rate. If you look at 2019, we had about eleven percent of our elementary students, that's grades three through six only, who failed at least one course during the first six weeks. Compare that to 2020, we're at about thirty-eight percent failing at least one course. When you go to junior high, from seventeen percent last year to over fifty-four percent this year, failing at least one of their classes. And in high school, the rate goes from thirty percent to forty-nine percent failing at least one of those classes. So just a couple of notes with the failure rates. So our students, of course, the first six weeks were engaged in virtual learning, which was a transition for our students and our staff members. As a result, we thought it was important that campuses are -- the teams are engaging in root cause analysis. We know that this is an extraordinary number of failures for many of our students. And speaking to counterparts across other systems, we talk quite a bit, and they're seeing similar challenges with grading as well. And so we thought it was important that we do some root cause analysis at the campus level, so that teachers could really dig deep into determining what are some reasons why our students are failing. And not only that, but then what are our next steps? Once we've identified the reasons, what are some counteracting measures that we're going to take as a system and as a department, as a campus, as a teacher, as a team, to be able to help support these students in being successful during the second six weeks of school? Connected to that, just an extension of what we talked about during our last board meeting, is grading guidance. So I thought it was important that we shared today that we did have a task force that was assigned to provide grading guidance. This task force was consistent of teachers and campus leaders, academic services team members, it was led by our chief academic officer, Dr. Wertz. This group met in the summer. They thought it was important, even then, that we're proactively, you know, preparing for students who might struggle with this transition back from virtual to in-person learning as well. And so the grading guidance was designed around these four pillars. The first one being mastery, that we're doing our best to grade towards mastery of the learning standards, that we are communicating progress that students are making or not making in the courses that they're taking. And the importance of that relationship, we can't -- it cannot be minimized, especially for many of our students who are learning virtually. Like, how are we still making those really important connections between teacher and student, even for students who are learning at home? And then encouraging and developing a growth mindset for our students. We know that the last several months have been challenging for them as well, having to shift to a different learning environment. So as they come across challenging content or rigorous learning, really encouraging them to have a growth mindset, that they can accomplish it, they can tackle the learning. And so that's the fourth pillar of the grading guidance, all founded on those four particular areas. So the grading guidance really is more of a resource for teachers. We shared with you several weeks ago, maybe several, yeah, several weeks ago, about the Connected Learning Framework and the teachers support, the support teachers would have in supporting both remote and in-person learning using the Connected Learning Framework. So with this framework, it does provide concrete examples for teachers of how to use best practices in assigning grades for our students in both environments. And we wanted to make sure that the Connected Learning Framework was integrated with all of the support documents and materials that teachers were utilizing to be able to support students. And then make sure this information is easily accessible for our teachers and our principals through, of course, our platform, which is Canvas. Now, this grading guidance will be shared with principals and teachers beginning next week, so the week of October twenty-sixth, which is on Monday. That's halfway through the second six weeks, and we'll be able to now share additional support for them, seeing now where our data's landed, that we can provide the guidance and support for our teachers as they continue to provide opportunities for students to demonstrate mastery. So last board meeting, we talked about Great Recovery. We also talked about Great Redemption. So the Great Recovery, we've had in place for quite some time, and that's for any of our students, of course, who failed, of course, in a six-week period, that they can try to recover that credit by enrolling in Edge Annuity and being able to master the content in that particular grade for that six weeks. We also talked briefly about Project PASS last board meeting. We thought it'd be important, just to kind of bring it up again, as it is important for all of our students, elementary and secondary. So as we have those students who was not, who were not successful in one course during that first six weeks, the teacher has the opportunity and option to provide additional resources, opportunities for that student to make up the work or an assessment they may have not done well in during that first six weeks. And again, the whole premise of this is allowing students multiple opportunities to demonstrate mastery of the content. The teacher would be the one who's given the assignments and would be able to be the one that could assign a grade or change a grade based on how well the student performed in that makeup assignment or that assessment. So the next part of our in-person learning update is around health and safety, and of course, every board meeting, we do go over the Tarrant County metrics for safer in-person instruction. I think we all know these by heart by now. The seven-day moving average being ten percent or less, the Tarrant County cases being less than two thousand per week, four weeks of showing stable or declining case count, and then our COVID-like illnesses data trending lower for the last two weeks. Also, the percent of hospital beds occupied in Tarrant County being below ten percent. So just sharing the updated data for you today from the Tarrant County dashboard, the bottom of our screen there, you will see that what we have in bold shows that we are -- the data's continuing to trend in the wrong direction. So we're at twelve percent for that positivity rate average, about thirty-nine hundred cases that ended the week of October seventeenth. Our COVID-like illness data is at three point six percent. And then our COVID, our hospital bed utilization is about ten percent, which is the total beds that we have available being used by COVID patients. We also shared the dashboard last, during our last board meeting, and so we'll continue to share this with you. We currently have two-hundred-and-three staff members that are currently under quarantine. Forty-five of those staff members were exposed at work. And then we have a total of three-hundred-and-thirty-seven students who are currently under quarantine due to exposure or positive cases. Our Arlington dashboard is updated every Tuesday by noon, and so this is our most recent data from yesterday at noon, twenty active staff cases and fourteen active student We also shared the self-reporting cases during our last board meeting, and this, of course, for staff members, if they are exposed to someone who tested positive, if they're exhibiting symptoms or tested positive themselves, we ask them to self-report. And you can see the trend line here. We're at October twenty-second, and we're already over three-hundred-and-eighty self-reported cases so far. Okay, that is the end of our presentation today.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Any colleagues have any questions, comments? Yes, Mrs. Fowler?
Thank you, President Mays. Dr. Brown, on the slide where you had showing the number of teachers and the number of students, can we go back to that slide?
I can't hear.
Can you hear me, Dr. Brown?
There we go.
I can't hear, but I'm not sure if it's me or not.
President Mays, there is no volume currently.
Make sure it wasn't just me.
That's a slide right there.
Does anybody else have the slide? Does anyone else have a slide that they could put up? It was the one that had the numbers.
There you go. We can hear you now.
Perfect.
Okay, Tracy, can you hear us?
Dr. Brown, can you hear me?
Okay, we're getting back here. Tracy, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So, Dr. Brown, it was your slide that had the forty-five teachers and three-hundred-and-thirty-seven students? Yes, that one. Okay, so with the two-hundred-and-three staff members and forty-five were exposed at work, with those, with the students of three-hundred-and-thirty-seven, is there any way that we can tell how many of those students were exposed at school as compared to outside of school?
Yes, we could. We do have that information that could be collected and shared.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have it off the top of my head.
That's fine. I'd just be interested, since we know the teacher-staff situation, I would just be interested in the student situation as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fowler. Any other trustees with questions or comments?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Walton.
Dr. Brown, this is Polly Walton. I am very interested in your Project PASS, the teacher-based six-week grading redemption program for elementary and secondary. So that will involve every, every level. Since we've got the failure rates, which are anywhere from thirty-eight percent to fifty-four percent, that's going to be a lot of kids eligible for this Project PASS. And it's going to be up to the teachers to provide this, and how are they going to do this on top of everything else they're already doing? Have we taken into consideration leaving off something else to add this? Or what's the plan?
Trustee Walton, thank you for that question. No, we have not had a conversation about that, just thinking about with teachers in their regular course of providing interventions for students. If there are students who failed and they have not, again, mastered the content that they were presented during that six weeks, what are some additional assignments you might be able to give them or opportunities to be able to be successful? But no, we've not had additional conversations about that. Dr. Wertz, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I would just say that in some situations, it really depends on how far a student has actually failed. We have some students who literally have failed by two percentage points and may simply need to make up an assignment and then turn it in, and that's the end of it. And other students who have to do what Tracy is discussing, which is go through some remediation. We do have several choices on the table, and I think it's important to emphasize, this is teacher-directed, meaning the teacher is the one who assigned the grade, they're the ones who have the ultimate say in all of this. But if a teacher, if a student is very, let's say, for example, a student, I'm making up a number, got a twenty, and there were several pieces of that six-weeks content that they were struggling with, if the teacher can opt to have that student enroll in Edge Annuity, which is asynchronous, it would be completely done at the, with the student doing it on their own, and there's an Edge Annuity lab manager that would oversee that student, and that student would take a pre-assessment, and any of the content areas that they already mastered, they would not have to redo, and the areas that they did not master would be the portion of the course that the Edge Annuity course would actually, the student would have to go through. But the reason why we linked Edge Annuity as a possibility for teachers to choose to lean into is exactly for what you're describing. For some students who may need more time to get through more portions of the course, the teacher can lean into that platform that's already there and available with the support of the lab manager. We have, we have tried to look across what requirements are on teachers right now and tried to make some adjustments to provide space for people, and we have done that this week even.
Dr. Wertz, I'm very glad to hear you say that you are considering that. Is Edge Annuity available to elementaries?
Unfortunately, it's not. Edge Annuity is a secondary platform. It's, it's, the courses are all secondary, they're not available in elementary.
So what is your plan for helping the elementary teachers with Project PASS?
So the only option that's available for elementary is teacher-based without an electronic platform or web-based platform like Edge Annuity, because it doesn't exist. And so what we have done as a team is, this last week, is kind of what I would call informally kind of audit, what are all the requirements being placed on teachers at the various grade-level bands? And we've made some adjustments even around some of their requirements to give space so that they didn't have, they didn't have all this PD, for example, they were trying to do and teach and plan and work on interventions. I think the important point to keep in mind that we've tried to do with elementary this year is to try to create some new space that we've never been able to have before. So like in the current academic schedule for elementary, there is additional PLC time that we've never been able to find. We've created a couple, a couple of blocks now that they've never, they hadn't had before. And then we also want to encourage teachers to leverage the INE time that's actually built into their school day to work with some of their small groups. But outside of that solution, we don't have a solution that's what I would call a web-based platform like we have in secondary, simply because it doesn't, we don't have that option available to us right now.
Yeah. Well, I'm concerned that the failure rate for elementary has tripled, and that's going to involve a lot more work. And anything you can do to help all levels, but particularly elementary, with this would be very helpful. And one thing that I would ask is that the PLC time really be guarded carefully and that that is teacher-directed activities for that kind of time whenever possible, and that any communications from administrative or coaches in the building or deans somehow be done other than taking up that time. Maybe a video could be. Maybe a video could be made of the information where the teacher could see it on their own time or whatever. But just some creative ideas for helping because getting these kids up to passing has got to be our most important goal at this moment because failure just gets more failure. So we've got to turn this around quickly for those kids, both socially and emotionally, and for academic performance reasons. So I applaud you all for Project PASS and for, you know, providing some, but it, it, you know, it's going to fall on the teachers. And we, we've got to really keep that in the fore of our, forefront of our mind. So thank you, and Dr. Brown, I appreciate it.
You're welcome. And I want, if I can just add one thing that I want to emphasize that you, that you mentioned, because I want to make sure I clarify, we're not expecting any kind of interventions to take place during the PLC time. But I agree with you, we really want to allow teachers to use that time for either planning or professional learning that they're doing with each other. We try to do what you described, which is create a lot of asynchronous moments where teachers can use resources rather than being pushed through mandated timelines. We're trying to do that. But the last thing I wanted to mention is the proactivity of the Project PASS, it's designed to be proactive because to your point, students may struggle with one content area, but it doesn't necessarily mean that they're, that they're set up right now to be retained or to completely lose credit. What we're trying to do is do exactly what you just described, which is kind of nip it in the bud early or give students an opportunity to kind of catch up quickly so that they don't find themselves in the scenario where the next six weeks they're also struggling. Now it's compounded. So that, that's the intent behind it, to do exactly what you're describing, but not necessarily for it to take place during a PLC time. So thank you for bringing that up.
You're welcome. Thank you, Dr. Words. Thank you, Ms. Walton. Mr. Hogg.
Thank you, President Mays. Dr. Words and Dr. Brown, I'll probably need both of y'all. And so, Ms. Walton, I appreciate your questions. We've started talking student achievement even more related to COVID in the last board meeting. And we knew we'd get some tonight, and we know staff is doing, as they said, root cause analysis of this. But when you look at student achievement numbers, and Ms. Walton said it, you know, we're at elementary school three times what we were last year, junior high three times, and high schools a little more than one and a half times. Failure rate, I mean, that's concerning. That's a major concern. And so, Dr. Words, as you, as you talk, and maybe this is Dr. Brown, as you talk about the root cause, help me understand what you're evaluating in the root cause. Will that, is that going to be the overall system? Are we extending our teachers too far, which is what all of us hear from teachers constantly, every single day? Is the root cause of we put in the wrong, you know, we have too many and you're doing virtual and face-to-face? Do we need to spread more to more virtual? Help me understand what, what you think we will see in that root cause analysis. Uh-oh.
Hold on. Hold on, Dr. Words, we can't hear you.
There you go. Sorry about that.
There we go.
So that's a really good question. As I've been visiting my colleagues that are in other systems across the metroplex and state, it's a challenge that everyone is facing. Most districts that I've talked to, their failure rates are up. And so what we tried to understand is what's the actual cause of it in terms of, is it the level of engagement? Is it connectivity? And, or is it the types of assignments or the number of assignments? Like, what's the actual reason? And we are in the process of sending out a survey to, with, to teachers to try to understand from their perspective, that, that will, well, tomorrow, from their perspective, what, what they believe is the cause. I will say in our initial look, as we looked at the numbers initially, right now it's kind of sporadic. And I will say that in terms of, we have some students that are, have failed. And remember, this number represents any student that failed at least one course. But we have some students that will literally have an 80 in one class and a 6 in another, or 100 in one class and a 20 in another. So we can see that when we look at our grades in the grade books, we have very few students that have no grades at all, which means we know they're connected and they're actually able to submit assignments. What we're trying to understand is what is the actual cause for the lack of achievement? Is it, is it that they're not persisting? Is it they're not staying engaged on the platform as much as they, as they need to? Do they need more synchronous time? And those are the things we're trying to understand. One thing I will say, when it comes to students that we aren't able to evaluate, which we are going to, is what's the difference in the environment? So the first six weeks, everybody was all online. Now we have kids that are coming face-to-face. So what we're, what we're in the process of trying now to do is to understand of the students who were failing at least one course in the last six weeks, of those students that are now coming face-to-face, have we seen a difference in their achievement? And what implications do they have on the way, with the way that we respond? So those are just some of the questions that we're trying to ask. To be, to answer your question, one other thing is that I think there's two, there's two paths to solve this problem, right? One is individual teacher, individual teachers to individual students. And then the other is, are there systemic issues that we need to address? I'll give you a quick example, one that we tried to solve, which was connectivity. The first question is, can kids even log in? Is that an issue? So for the problems that are systemic in nature, we're going to try to address those as they exist. And for the challenges that are individualized, meaning teachers having the time and the ability to work individually with students that are struggling, trying to make space and time for that. And so even Dr. Brown and I have had some conversations as recently as today about how can we even consider adjusting the way that we approach even scheduling or whatever it may be to help make space for that, once we know what the answers to those questions are, which we're in the process of evaluating. I don't know, Dr. Brown, if you have anything that you want to add.
Yeah.
He covered a lot. And listen, I know we're early on the root cause. And Dr. Words, you know, not the ideal time for us to do assessments, but I think it's a critical time that we are assessing because I think all of us up here, in the spring, we said, we know students are getting behind. Our staff's really good at getting them caught up. And I think we'd all planned, September and October, we're going to be catch-up from the spring. Well, now, we're dripping down that drain a little more, and we're getting even farther behind. So there is a risk assessment. So I, while I know it was not an ideal time to do assessments, it is a critical time to do assessments to see where, where students are in that, in that achievement. Dr. Words, when, when we come back and we have some root cause, are you going to show us how many have failed from just strictly no-showing? You know, the ones that they've logged in, we know we have them enrolled, and now they're not showing? Or they're skipping certain classes? When they were having, and I know it's, it's transition now. We have more face-to-face versus all virtual. But I do think we have to make that differentiation of when that number, what is that number? How much is that number fail rate, virtual, and what's the transition? So I don't know if there's an exact answer to that, but I definitely want to see the numbers of flat-out no-shows of students that just aren't doing the work from that side, or families aren't doing it. And Dr. Words, the other question I'm going to ask, and I appreciate you saying this. We brought it up, I think, the last two board meetings, pretty ferociously as a board. And we've pushed pretty hard on this. And we've told teachers, our staff, senior staff is working on this, and I can't tell them enough. And so I think they're going to be very happy to hear there's a survey coming out tomorrow.
There's a what? Yes, survey, that's correct.
And as people, people like surveys because we have proven as a board, we do listen to them and we utilize them. So I appreciate that going out to teachers tomorrow and hearing that. I also would ask, as you, and you may not be completed, but as you've run, and you said earlier, you'd run an audit of what is being placed on teachers and what you've pulled off. I, I would like to see what we have pulled off and also maybe, I don't want to say what all's on them because it's a long list, but definitely relief that it's being granted from that standpoint. I would be interested in seeing those. And then I'll, I'll stop. I'll, I'll end it there just on some basic general question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hogg. Any other questions or discussions? Yes, Mr. Chapa.
Thank you, President Mays. I have, just kind of roll through the, the presentation. Starting with our enrollment numbers, I know that they've been ticking up for quite some time. And, and my memory's a little hazy, but it looks like we've recovered about 800 to 1,000 students from the very beginning. Is that right? We were just over 56,000, and now we're a little over 57,000.
And Mr. Chapa, real quick, I'm sorry. Some of those may be new students? Maybe they're not the ones that didn't show up?
So that was, that's my question, actually, is, is, you know, what is the, what is the average profile of one of these students that are now trickling back in? Are they new students who've just moved to the district? Are they students who we know we had them last year or at some prior point, and, and they chose not to do in-person or virtual learning? And they're just now rolling back in with the opportunity to do face-to-face?
Right. We, we can, we can run that analysis over a period of time if they've ever enrolled with us before or they just new enrollees. We can run that. We can look for that, yeah.
Okay, but we currently don't have a sense of, of where they're coming from. We just know that they're trick, trickling in at, you know, maybe a dozen or two a day.
Yeah, and, and I think one thing that to keep in mind, and this, not to go on attention here, but our mobility rate is very high. And so there's a, this is a net effect. And so there's a lot of mobility, as we've talked about before. And so this happens every year. They, people move in, people come, new students, et cetera. So we can certainly examine that phenomenon. It's not at the large numbers that, you know, would give us maybe a lot of the insight because, like you said, it's trickling in, but we can look at it.
Okay, that, that would be great. I mean, I think that would be something that would be interested, interesting for us to know and maybe might drive some decisions we make at the governance level. And it's not a criticism of anything that the district is doing. This came up at a stakeholder meeting that, that you and I attended earlier this week. And there was a question asked about, you know, oh my gosh, you're missing about 2,000 students. That sure sounds like a lot. And, and it is, but they, we don't really know what that, at this point, what, what's driving that 2,000. We know we're getting some students back. But we also know that other districts across the country that are similar to us in demographics and, and our, and just how our student profile is, we're actually doing, I think, quite a bit better than some of our peer districts who are like us. This is a nationwide problem. It's not unique to Arlington ISD. I then wanted to move on to the, this is, comes from the slide that, that shows the number of students who've chosen in-person versus virtual. And that, that is aggregate district-level data that's on that slide. And I know the board's been provided with, with campus-specific data, which, thank you for getting to us because it's something that I had asked for at the last meeting. And so my question on that would be, you know, the district-wide average for, for in-person learning is 55%. We have a lot of campuses that are under that, but we also have a lot of campuses that are over that. So what are we doing at campuses like, say, Duff, which, where about 75% of the students came back in person? And we've got several others close to 70% or around there in the high 60s. What are we doing at those campuses to ensure that our COVID protocols, that social distancing, are able to be implemented effectively?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll answer that first part of the question. And that is, it, it gets a little complicated because even, I'll use some examples, maybe not by school, but where we had 60% said they would come, they don't show up. They, they, they stay home, they stay virtual, even though they said they were coming. They changed their mind. So we visited, and the areas under Tracy have visited much more. But we visit schools where those numbers percentages are high, but the classrooms, they're not, they're not in the problem, if you will. In other words, there's not that many students. Strategies include redistributing students to other locations, like the library, the gymnasium, et cetera, where possible, so that you can kind of lower those numbers. But ultimately, with what we're faced with, with TEA, you know, we end up in situations where you social distance if you can, as best as you can. We're not seeing that widespread across the district where we had to say, you know, basically, as, as best as you can. But there are some schools where that is, that is the case. Schools approach that differently, depending on the numbers. If that is not widespread, then you can redistribute students or level classes. That's what they do. If they can't, they do their best to social distance. That's the one protocol that we've said from the very beginning would be very difficult to achieve if many students decide to come to school. The other protocols of wearing a mask, temperature checks, screeners, lunch, and things like that, we can do with fidelity to a large extent. And so just as relatively speaking, in, in other districts, they're not doing the temperature checks. They're not doing the screeners. And so that's, that's where we are today. And I don't know, Dr. Brown, if you want to add anything to that or not?
Yes, sir. The only thing I would add is that the principals have, you know, done a really good job of trying to utilize even larger spaces if they, if they can, empty classrooms to be able to spread students out. So they have the autonomy and flexibility to make those adjustments as they need to. And in most cases, they've been able to do that. Now, we have a few outliers, as Dr. Cavasus mentioned, that, where we have more students than we would like in a classroom. But they're doing their best to make sure all the other mitigating protocols are in place if we cannot physically distance at that moment. So that's the only thing I would add.
Okay, and I think a follow-up on that I would have is, is there anything at this point that we are looking at, and we've been doing this for a few weeks now? And there's any protocols that we're finding are not effective in the sense that we, we don't think that they're actually contributing to student-staff safety? That, that there are things that we're looking at maybe down the road eliminating?
Yeah, so, and, and I will frame it a little differently in terms of, we have, you know, we evaluate our protocols based on, have we been able to implement them with fidelity? Have we been consistent? And have we formed a habit? And that's really, that's really important because a lot of this is habit forming. In other words, we can have protocols, but if people forget, people forget, people forget, we haven't formed a habit. So we've gotten really strong in our protocol implementation. So to your question, Mr. Chapa, for example, just yesterday, we evaluated over several days and made the decision that we would allow campus staff to go for lunch if they need to, go run an errand during the conference period, take care of some business, you know, that, you know, prescription or otherwise that needs to be done, and come back to the building. Prior to yesterday, campus staff and everybody had to stay in the building. They couldn't, they couldn't leave because we wanted to establish our protocol and make sure that it was done with fidelity. So now it's working. We adjust. They could leave for emergencies or specific, you know, exceptions such as doctor visits and stuff. Let me be clear. But you couldn't just go to lunch or go get a Sonic drink and things like that, you just during the day. But once we get our protocols done, we get them in, habit forming, we start changing those things. So that's one. The other one that I anticipate that will come next, again with different protocols, but starting to adapt, is the volunteers that want to come into our building to volunteer, to allow that to happen in a very controlled way. Today, we don't allow it, and for the right reasons. So yes, we're evaluating these all the time and making sure that we adapt when we feel like the habit has been formed. So I'll pause there a little bit. That's the reflection on that.
Yeah, Boogie. Can I, I just have one piece of good news. I shared this with Dr. Cavasus, but not with the rest of you. I ran into a neighbor of mine who is, teaches pre-K three-year-olds. And they just started back in person. She's got half of her little chicks there. And they're all wearing their masks very proudly, very religiously. And they, they just think they're the big kids on the block because they can do it. So I think that we are making headway on the mask-wearing, at least among the three-year-olds. It would be great if some of the older kids would take a note from the threes.
Well, that brings up another question I had, and also, Dr. Cavasus, you, you've said the word fidelity several times. And I had written down here a question about our fidelity to the protocols. And just, you know, something that we do hear as trustees somewhat, I would say relatively often, the, the communication to us on is, is in some way that there's been some deviation from a protocol. And, and a lot of times, it's very minor. And there's going to be, you know, a system our size, some minor deviations are to be expected. But what sort of systems do we have in place to reinforce the protocols that we do want to keep in place to make sure that they're implemented uniformly across the district?
Yeah, so there's, there's a, a strong accountability to the protocol implementation. I will say that I'm very proud of our teachers and our staff and principals and others because, and I'll start kind of from the extreme. The protocols have not broken down, you know, in a large scale or even at a campus or even at a big classroom or in a or even at a campus or even at a big classroom or anything like that. And so we have accountability. I do have two categories, I think, to your question, Mr. Chapa. And one is, yes, there are sometimes we get feedback that some protocols are being compromised, if you will. But the other category in that same concept is the habit formation, right? And so it's, it's, yes, there may be in a case where a protocol was compromised or was not implemented. And in some category in that, it's because people, it's counterintuitive. It's counterintuitive to not, to stay in your room, to not go visit, to not go have lunch together and things like that. It's counterintuitive. We're, it's a human kind of industry that we're in. And it's very much something that we build relationships with. So, you know, we've seen those situations where it was by accident or by, you know, they weren't trying to do anything wrong, it just happened because you haven't formed the habit. But when we see that, or when that's reported, or when that's, that's something we become aware of, we certainly hold individuals accountable. And, but we don't start that way. We start with the positive intent that it's a habit-forming. Patience, make sure we understand why the protocol wasn't implemented. We bad situations where it just, they didn't, they didn't remember because it's just something that is so different, the way we operate. So we have to have patience with that, but we have, you know, the vast majority of the protocol implementation is with fidelity. Across a big district like this and over periods of time where we've gone through hybrid and now face-to-face and all that, it's just really remarkable when we walk those schools. Dr. Brown, I don't know if you have anything you want to add to that?
One thing I would add is the area superintendents, when they're conducting visits, they visit campuses pretty much every day. They also do kind of spot checks and operational walks just to kind of make sure that if there's anything that the campuses need that they're not getting, if there's a system that might be broken down, they try to spot-check those. Now, they're not on campuses every day, but they certainly include those conversations with principals about how's it working, what's not working, what adjustments should we make? And I think everybody's doing the best they can. But I think what Dr. Cavassos mentioned, sometimes there might be a lapse. But in general, people are really trying to be, stay true to the protocols as best they can.
Okay. Now I would have turned to the slide dealing with the failure rates. And I know Mr. Hogg covered this in some detail. And so I don't, I don't want to spend a whole lot of time on it. But I will start by saying that that slide and Mr. Hogg's comments, I think, prove the point we're trying to make in a couple of the legislative agenda items we adopted tonight about how we are a little bit further behind, I think, on catching up than we expected to be at this point or that we had hoped in the spring. And again, we're not the only district dealing with this. Quite a few districts are, I think every district is in some respect. But it just shows the need for an ongoing, long-term, sustained effort on the part of the state to support us as we try to address those gaps. Because we know that they're coming, we said this in the spring, and we, we are going into a legislative session where it's already been previewed that there's going to be potentially some significant funding cost to education or some sort of modification of the way that we are funded that is less than what we are able to do now. And Dr. Cavassos, as you've said many times, that this is not the right time to do that. If anything, we're going to need more support on the, to help with our remediation efforts and compensatory front to catch our students up. And I think it absolutely shows that it's a pipe dream at this point for the state to expect us to go through the usual accountability system next spring. And I will credit this board, and this is something that Mr. Hogg pushed hard on in the spring as well, for us to be one of the first districts, if not the first district in the state to adopt a resolution asking the state to suspend the accountability system for next year. Because at this point, we need to be focusing on catching up our students and closing those gaps and not worried about a business-as-usual administration of the STAR test. That's, I think, the data that we saw tonight, that we've seen, that other districts are experiencing, proves that that is a totally inadequate and inappropriate response to this situation. And so I would, again, as we said in our legislative agenda, ask the legislature to take that into account in the spring and give us some relief on that front so we can do right by our students. I will focus more specifically now on the, on the failure rate slide and say, and ask, is there anything from the root cause analysis that we have already uncovered? Any initial or tentative conclusions that can shed some light on to why? You know, I think there's some, some increase was expected, but the magnitude of the disparity that we're seeing here? Any insight on that tentatively?
Yeah, so I'll start with that and then ask the others to also help with that. But I will say that, just so we calibrate on this slide, because it's an important slide, this is the first six weeks if you're failing one or more classes. And we're about to close the second six weeks. So what we don't have yet is the next snapshot, right? Which is the second six weeks. Second six weeks may show better, may show not so, you know, not so well, right? And so what we want to make sure is that on that root cause analysis that we, and by the way, everybody's familiar because the board has dealt with this before, the root cause analysis is not something done quickly. And it doesn't yield a quick answer, right? And I think the root cause analysis with the survey for teachers is really asking questions such as, of the students failing, are they engaged in synchronous activity with you? Are they never engaged with you? You know, what percentage are your general feedback from the teachers? And to the strategy, and I'm going to get to your root cause preliminary, but to the strategy, just to make sure we calibrate on the Project PASS and things that Ms. Walton was bringing up and things like that, it's more of communication that these tools are available to teachers. Because the Project PASS and redemption of credit and things like that is a secondary phenomenon, really, in the past, pre-COVID. And so to spread that out and distribute and make sure teachers understand you can do these things as an option to help students, right? And so first-six-week snapshot is very challenging because everybody was virtual. We were just starting. And, you know, everybody's getting used to this. We had the spring semester is not like the fall semester. We made that over and over. And I think we've said that, I don't know how many times, that what we're experiencing in the fall was not going to be what we experienced in the spring in terms of level of instruction, engagement, things like that. I think one insight that Dr. Wertz, and we're still looking, but is that it doesn't seem like there's a vast number of students who have no grades. And so what that tells us, again, surface-level root cause analysis, if you will, is that they are engaging in some work, but not persistently or maybe not at all in some subjects. And we have to keep in mind that, again, first-six-week snapshot, right? So everybody was virtual. There may be family situations going on, which we know they are. They're getting used to logging in at a certain time, having time to finish that. So very, very preliminary. We don't have the results of that. I think the survey will yield a view. I don't think it's going to solve all the, you know, problems and give us all the information. I think second-six-weeks data is going to be very telling as well. And we know that students can make up the work and they can pass for the semester. And the semester is where you get your credit and secondary and things like that. So preliminary, very preliminary, we're seeing that there isn't an issue with complete disengagement. It's more about sporadic engagement. And again, that's very preliminary, but that's, that's one thing we're seeing. The other thing we're seeing is that there are some situations at some schools that there seems to be a concentration of a lot of failures. You know, with, with whether that's math at secondary, which we know that if you don't keep up with math, it's really hard. And so half of a class is failing? Okay, well, what's, what's going on there? And this is, this is by no means a critique or a judgment or any of that. This is, we are in a different time with this pandemic. Nobody was designed to do virtual learning like this. We weren't, nobody, no public education system. No one was, you know, kind of went to school to learn how to do this. And now they're supporting both. And that's the best thing that we can do, I think, to keep the continuity. But anyway, that's the very beginning, preliminary of root cause analysis is that there doesn't seem to be a widespread disengagement. And that's, I think, a positive, you know. Dr. Wertz, I don't know if you want to add anything to that or Dr. Brown?
No, I think, I think what you said is right. I think it's, it's still a little preliminary. I think the insights that the teachers are going to add will give us some perspective about what, what their thoughts are, who are on the ground actually working directly with students. But yeah, an initial, just looking at numbers, it articulates pretty much what you've said. So I think, I think what teachers will add will kind of add more color to the picture and give us a better sense about how to address it.
Okay, and that, I mean, that brings up, it really leads right into my next question, which is, is, you know, we've been emphasizing that we're approaching these issues with an equity lens. And so is there anything at this point that we can look at at the, at a high level and say that this is a district, a true district-wide phenomenon? Or is this sort of, we've got some campuses that might be outliers where, you know, some campuses seem to have a greater issue with, with the failure rate than others? Are we able to determine that yet?
Go ahead, Dr. Wertz.
Well, so we can see the numbers by school. I think across the whole system, obviously, there's something, the number is significantly different than it was last time. But yet, there is, there is a significant number, I would say, in really all quadrants of the district, whether I'm looking on the west side of town versus the, the east side of town. I do think in terms of equity, there is a big difference in terms of failure rates that we're seeing in the more impoverished parts of town. It's, it's worse. So that does exist. I would say it's a problem everywhere, but yeah, the areas where it's more impoverished, we do, and I'm making a general statement, I'm just, I'm thinking, for example, off the top of my head, the high schools. The more impoverished high schools tend to have, are having larger failure rates than those that have less students who are economically disadvantaged.
And I'll just add, you know, this is, this is, and you're not asking this maybe yet, but this is one of those dilemmas that Mr. Hogg mentioned about, you know, what is the redefinition of some of these things? You know, the state mandates attendance every day. The teacher has to take it, et cetera. And they have a ninety percent rule, which is not even in this discussion yet, about ninety percent attendance, or else you can't get credit. If you're not, and that's true pre-COVID, right? And so this is a state requirement. And so where do some of those big structural adjustments begin to happen so that individuals have a likelihood of success? And then this lockstep of six weeks becomes a grade, becomes a credit, becomes a graduation, you know? Where does that give a little bit or a lot during this time? So there's some, there's some structural things statewide and really from the state that, that I think all converge during this time that makes it difficult for, for students and teachers. Ninety percent attendance rule, or you can't get credit unless you redeem your absences. It's a big issue. They've given us some flexibility with that, but it's still the same in terms of that. So anyway.
Thank you for that. And I look forward to seeing what we find with the root cause analysis because it's a, you know, it is a serious concern that we have that if we're going to maintain these environments, which I think we need to do, given the environment, we've committed to parents that we're going to continue providing choice in terms of them having the option to move between virtual and face-to-face. But, but we have to be cognizant of the consequences that that might have academically and figure out how to make those programs sustainable to the extent we need to. I did have one quick question on Project PASS. I noticed that the, the slide is phrased in terms of teachers can. And then I noticed that the answer to Ms. Walton suggested that, that teachers have quite a bit autonomy in, in how to address this. So I guess the simple question I would have is, is, is Project PASS something that teachers have to participate in? Or is this something that we're encouraging teachers to participate in?
We're encouraging. I would say that in the spirit of how we, how we approach some of this, this is a tool, another tool that either, and again, this is not a judgment because it's not, it was an unnecessary tool maybe in the past, that maybe people don't even realize that they have this tool because they have needed it before in a classroom, you know, pre-COVID. And so that's one, and that's, may sound small, but it is really big to say, widespread understanding that you can do this to redeem grades and have this kind of system. But it's a tool, another tool is intervention, another tool is tutorial. This problem isn't solved, as we all know, with one tool. We have to give individuals, and so as much as we've talked about training and being flexible on that, and I completely support that. But some teachers are asking for tools of how to solve this problem when we have students at home and at school. And we have to provide, and that's part of what is part of the system, is providing some support. We're asking teachers in that survey, what support do you need in this type of environment? We've never been in this type of environment. We weren't in this environment in the spring. For some stayed home and some came to school. So it's even a new, a new kind of a system. And so that's important feedback for us. Well, I need support and how do I deliver this? Or how do I, you know, allow students to make up work and things like that? So it's a comprehensive approach. And I credit our curriculum staff or principals and others who have worked on this because it's not a quick solution, but there are multiple tools. But to answer your question specifically, it is a tool for teachers. It's not a requirement. Dr. Wertz, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
No, I, everything you say is exactly what I would, I agree with it, yeah. I don't have anything to add. It really is.
Oh, go ahead, Dr. Wertz.
Well, all I was going to say really is, is it is, like he said, like one of many things. The reality is, is teachers are the ones who are responsible for their students and the grades they assign. So we can provide them with the tools and resource to help their, help them, help their students be successful and create some systems that allow them to compensate for students that are struggling or to provide support for students that are struggling. But it is the teacher's initiative.
And that's, and that's good to hear. And I just asked that question really for two, for two reasons. I mean, one is, is as a former teacher, and we've said many times, we support teacher autonomy. We want to support teachers in our classes and how they interact with individual students. And so we can emphasize grace, but if there's a situation where the teacher feels like, they've expended a lot of grace and at a certain point, you know, there has to be, not a consequence necessarily, but, but there's an end to it, right? They don't feel like they have to keep, in a particular situation, do something that they don't feel is called for vis-à-vis a particular situation. And then the second thing is, and we've all got, on the board have got these emails from individual parents who are upset because maybe there's a teacher who isn't using something like Project PASS and, and has a different view that, you know, this was the rule that I set, the rule wasn't followed, there's an immediate, this is the rule and I'm applying it. And they come to us as board members and say, well, I thought the district's policy was grace and I don't feel like grace is being extended here. We're just emphasizing that this is a tool that we're providing teachers. It is, and it's something we're encouraging them to do. But it might not be something that every single teacher is going to want in their toolkit.
That's correct. And I'll add one thing that I think it's important to surface because we've had a lot of discussion tonight about root cause analysis. Root cause analysis is that it goes all the way to the classroom level. And root cause analysis is not easy. It's not easy work. But it's not just a system that does root cause analysis. A teacher does it in their classroom about, well, why are half of my kids failing? Is it because they have this or they don't connect? And, and then try to surface ways to mitigate that. But root cause analysis, our expectation is that it happens across the system, not just at a system level, because some of these things are not system solutions. It may be a classroom solution, right? And so back to balancing, and I think some of us have had that discussion, back to balancing what we're asking of staff and campuses and things like that. This is a priority. And we have looked at other trainings and things like that. And quite frankly, we have continued to extend deadlines and all that. And we'll continue to do that anywhere we can. And I think we will, we're looking at the reading academies and what's possible. That's a state requirement, right? So we have limitations, but we can do some things, right? But at the end of the day, this type of analysis and intervention is, it's a team effort. And so to your point, Mr. Chapa, you know, that, yes, there are situations where at some point you have to assign a grade. And, and you have to reflect whether the student mastered or understood the material. And that's why I think in this spirit of a team effort, it includes our state with STAR, with, and things that they're requiring, so just ninety percent, things. with, and, and things that they're requiring, such as 90%, things that are state law, you know? But anyway, I want to make sure we're calibrated and that root cause analysis is all the way in the classroom. Because that's where the answers are, and many times, we've said that over and over.
Thank you, and I'm, I'm going to switch gears just a little bit. I was, I had a question here about teacher burnout and, and what we're doing to affirmatively to provide them some relief, but it sounds like we're doing a, a survey. It sounds like we're already looking into that, and we're going to get a follow-up on that in, in the next meeting or two. So I'll just hold off on that. And, and I'll turn to the slide dealing with the COVID metrics. And I, I have a couple of questions, and I, but I have a, a lead-in first. And, and the lead-in is, is I want to set aside, we get a lot of emails, we see a lot of chatter on social media, and, and I want to set aside for the moment the question of whether or not, or the debate on whether or not schools are driving the increase in community spread, or whether it's attributable to some, to some other cause. But it's clear at this point in Tarrant County that, that community spread is substantial. It's been increasing for weeks now. And in fact, Tarrant County has reached the point where I think we're the leading urban county in Texas in terms of our numbers and metrics. And it's, and the numbers are still not showing any ti, any, any real signs of, of slowing down. And that sort of lines up with what we're seeing nationally. So at this point, it's not a, to me, it's not a question of are the, are the schools driving it or not? It's in the community, and there's only so much we can do to keep it out of the community. And it makes sense to me that as community spread increases, the likelihood of it making it, its way onto our campus is going to increase as well. And, and we've seen that, and, and, you know, not to get into too much nuance here, but, but the board is sometimes informed. Dr. Cabas, as you provide us updates on, on closures and when we started, or isolation incidents. And, and when we started, it was if there was one person, you know, the board got an update. And now we've reached a point, I think, this week where you have started only sending us updates where there's an incident that affects 10 or more people. And we got a few of those this week, and they were somewhat lengthy messages. And that lines up with the increase in numbers we're seeing in the community. So that is my lead-in to, to saying, you know, we're at a point now where we've only got 34 active cases, but that's led to about 550 people being in quarantine. And that, that is a substantial disruption to our system, even if the numbers, it, it seems like even if the numbers were to only go up modestly, it's going to have a, a not exponential, but a disproportionate effect on the number of people who have to be quarantined, which then leads to classroom closures, potentially grades being sent home, extracurriculars not being able to move forward, and, and potentially even a, a situation where there's a campus closure. So I guess my question would be, we expect more number, extra disruptions as the numbers are going up. So, so what level of disruption are we looking at, at, at a campus level, at a grade level, or even at a district level? What level of disruption is the point at which we, we close a grade, we close a school? Or we make the decision as, as, you know, Dr. Ten Asia got a lot of press a few weeks ago for suggesting that districts need to prepare if the numbers get too bad to go back to virtual learning? So what level disruption is going to trigger that for us at these different levels?
That's a, it's a very, very important question. Disruption varies, like you said, to, from different situations in different extent. We work closely with our health department and our county health department, Dr. Ten Asia, Dr. Simmons locally in Arlington, to make sure that we were calibrated as to, to answer that question. And unfortunately, there isn't a, a clear cut, you know, this is the threshold by which we would close a school. But I can give you examples, because, you know, in some cases, if there is so much spread at the school, so many cases, positive cases, not quarantine cases, we may have to shut the school down for that period of time until people can come back to work, because we simply cannot operate the school. We haven't gotten to that point, but the numbers are growing, and you've seen them here tonight. Contact tracing is the foundation of mitigating spread. I'll say that again. Contact tracing is the foundation, it's the big tool to, to, to stop the spread or slow it down or mitigate. And so if we are in a situation at a school, for example, where we cannot contact trace, it is too widespread, then that's a situation we would close the school, until we could, until we could figure that out. And it wouldn't be any fault of anybody in terms of why it would be that, you know, so widespread that we couldn't figure it out. It would be the volume. And so if the volume is such that we can't notify individuals in a timely manner that they're a close contact, we may have to shut the school down. Now, until when? In that example, until we can get a handle on contact tracing. If we have many cases, until when? Until people and the system in that school can come back to operation. And so those situations are really critical, and we would work with our county health to help us assess some of that. When do we have too many cases at a school? You know, intuitively, when we're sending a bunch of people home for quarantine, you've got too many cases, right? But there's some other factors about can you control it and things like that. You know, our transportation department is a big system of operation. And we've had some outbreak there, just transparently, and we've shared this publicly too. And so we, we, if that system has so many cases, for example, it's not just a school, it could be an entire department system, right? Then we would have to disrupt transportation services, which then would lead to, you know, if, if it disproportionately affects some schools, it would disproportionately affect the students at that school. So those are the things that we look at. And so far, and it's early in this, as you know, we've been able to manage and manage well, because we have trained staff. You know, in many ways, we're the example of how we do contact tracing in a public school, because we do it with fidelity, back to that point. But I do know that that continues to grow. And as that continues to affect more and more people, that we may be in a situation where we have to close the school for a period of time. The other side of that is that if we get into that situation where we have to close the school, we also will be very mindful about how we open. So reopening may be a hybrid situation for a small period of time, so that we can readjust to the protocols, readjust to county health. These are unknowns, right? Readjust to county health recommendations about if you've had this situation at a school and you've had to close, when you come back, you make sure you do X, Y, and Z, that we haven't been doing today, because we haven't had it. And so we would slow the opening of that school. And this is, I, I share this often, and that is the, we, we, as a, as a collective community, build the tolerance for disruption. And disruption, we talk about failure rates and many, many things tonight, but disruption in performance and learning and instruction and all that is happening. And if it happens at a wide scale, then we reevaluate, you know, whether that school needs to, needs to close. It's a long answer to your question, Mr. Tapa, but that gives you some insight as to what the things we look at in making those decisions.
No, I, I think that's really helpful, because I think that that is a very, you, you felt like it was a very long explanation, but I felt like it was a pretty succinct explanation of a very complex problem that we get a lot of questions about, because I think people understand the protocols at a broader level, but we certainly get a lot of feedback and questions about these things are very disruptive. When is too much? Like, what's guiding your decision-making given those disruptions? And so that's very helpful to hear, I think, for most people who don't, who don't come to our board meetings on a regular basis. And, and you mentioned county health authority, and I mentioned Dr. Ten Asia. So just a real quick question on that. In, in his comments a few weeks ago, saying we should prepare, given the numbers for virtual learning, he again alluded to the Texas Attorney General's letter from, from July, which still gives county health authorities the ability to close individual campuses based on public health concerns. Has he shared anything with you as to what, what metrics or what, what is going to trigger that sort of campus shutdown order from them? Because they haven't used it yet, but, but it is out there. So he's, he said, when, into what circumstances would he use that as to an individual campus?
Yeah, and so that's a great question. And, and yes, we've had that discussion. And quite frankly, what would, what would get him to that decision would be a problem at a school. As I've described, contact tracing, too many cases, positive cases at a school or department. That would get, that would prompt his effort to close the school or the department. You know, we've asked specifically, and I've had this discussion with him as well, if we have significant community spread, if you will, around a school, would that prompt the decision from the county to close the school? And quite frankly, they said no. If the community spread was around a school significantly, but it was not in the school, they wouldn't preemptively or proactively shut the school down. And in a small portion, I, I understand some of that thinking, because we are implementing protocols with fidelity. So when they come to our school, they're wearing a mask, they're taking their temperature, they're doing the temperature screening or their assessment every day. And they may not do that at home if they're not coming to school. Again, small way I see some of the thinking. Big picture, it's a little counterintuitive or a lot counterintuitive. You have a lot of community spread that the county wouldn't want to step in to a location. But to answer your question, it is when there's a problem at the school that they will work with us to, to close it.
Okay. I, I think I just have two more questions. And going back to what I mentioned about the, the number of incidents sort of ticking up in terms of how many people we're, we're having to send home in, in an increasing frequency, are there any trends with regard to those incidents? Are they occurring in the campuses where we have face-to-face? Are they, they tend to be concentrated among, are they occurring even at the high school level where we have hybrid? Or is campuses where we have a high number of in-person learners? Or are there any commonalities that link together those incidences? Are they, incidents, are they really truly sort of arbitrary and, and happening all over?
Yeah, I think, I think they're pretty consistent with what would require quarantine. So if you have a positive case in a classroom, and the classroom has been together for a long time, like a day, half-day, that's, that's going to yield that, that quarantine. That's what we've seen more consistently, is that it's, it's really the amount of time that individuals are around somebody who's positive. And again, that's not a judgment, that's not a critique. That's just reality. People will not know they're positive until they get a result. And then you do the contact tracing and try to figure out, okay, who were they with for a persistent amount of time? And, and so that's, that's probably the most consistent. High schools have had some disruption, but probably not as much. There's a high school that has had a, a big disruption, so I don't want to minimize that. But of the cases we're talking about, they haven't had that kind of disruption. And in, in this type of environment, I always say, yet. Yet.
But, but so far, the, the sort of incidents involving, you know, more than just a handful of people would seem to have been concentrated at the, the elementary, junior high level?
Yes.
Okay. And then my, my last question is, we've, we've heard some discussion about, in, in prior meetings about, you know, all of these disruptions increase our need for staff on campuses, because we do have staff that are leaving campus, because they need to be quarantined for some reason. Who is picking up that, who's stepping into the roles that those teachers were assuming? I know we have, we have subs. We've heard before that we have, have, and we're not the only ones that have an issue getting subs. How are we addressing situations where it's a staff member or a teacher in particular that has to go home? Who's filling those positions?
Yeah, so, so a couple of things on that, just to keep in mind. In, in a lot of the cases that we talk about, it's the whole class that goes home. So the teacher and the students go home to, to quarantine. So they continue their virtual instruction, or they now go all virtual, right? And quarantine doesn't mean you're positive. So teachers continue to work from home, delivering the instruction. So thus far, not that it hasn't caused disruption, but thus far, when you have those bigger numbers, it's really a reduction. So you'll have one teacher and many students. So you're not seeing the teachers at the same volume of students, if you will, right? And that makes sense, because we have more students than teachers. So it's manageable, so far. And I, I want to qualify that, because these continue to grow. And so if you have a grade level that has to quarantine, well, all the kids and all teachers quarantine and teacher assistants. And so they just go virtual, and that's, that's manageable. If you have widespread, in terms of numbers of students that have to go home, which we've seen, but a few staff members, then that's actually, you know, you're subtracting the number of kids coming to school. So you just serve them virtually, the teachers are still available, right? So, so far, that's been, that's been the dynamic. Certainly not suggesting that that's always going to be the dynamic. You may have situations, and that's where we would come in and say, we can't operate the school. So is it, is it time to close the school for a period of time, until people get out of quarantine? And again, just to be clear, the quarantine doesn't mean they're positive. But if you can't operate a school, then you wait those 14 days so that people come out of quarantine, and then you can operate the school again.
Well, those are, those are all the questions that I have. And I, I think what you've said tonight, I think, gives a lot of insight into how we're dealing with these disruptions and just how, you know, for lack of a word, how disruptive they are. I mean, I, for the people who have to go home because they're close contacts and they're, they're quarantined, it's not just that we're asking them not to go to school during that time. I mean, ideally, they are not going about their normal daily lives either. And so it's a severe disruption for those families. You know, if they're being asked to go home, there, there are students who've returned to campus because they're, they're face-to-face. For whatever reason, the parents have to send them, one of which might be the parents really needed to go to work, and this, and now the parents have to scramble to find a way to take care of a student who's had to quarantine. So it's a tremendous amount of disruption occurring for families and our staff and our students. And just have a sincere and great amount of appreciation for everyone's grace as we roll through this. And, and I know that everybody's trying to do the best that they can.
Thank you, Mr. Tapa. Yes, Ms. Walton.
I wanted to add one thing, and that was the perfect way. A little while ago, we were talking about teacher responsibility, you know, for the grades, teacher responsibility. We've got some really hardworking students out there that are figuring out how to become lifelong learners by learning how to manage their time, how to, you know, self-direct their learning. And that's going to be a good outcome from this. We've also had parents develop a much closer relationship with their children as they support their kids through this learning, this different way of learning. And I'm thinking back to Thomas Friedman at our Great City Schools Conference last week that indicated that in the future, the kids that we have in school right now, the world's going to look a lot different. And they're going to have to be lifelong learners to continue advancing in their work or many different jobs or careers. So I just want to kind of, I guess, say thank you to our kiddos who are figuring this out and to our parents who have also learned something from all of this about their role in all of us being responsible for helping our kiddos go back to our goal, you know, graduate 100% ready. It takes a lot of components to, to do that. So I, I hope when we come out of all of this, we will have learned a valuable lesson for, it's everybody's responsibility to get educated.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. Any other comments, questions? Yes, Mr. Will Banks.
I want to thank my colleagues, Mr. Tapa, Ms. Walton, and Mr. Hogg. I believe all of my questions have been covered, but there's one that I would like a little bit more clarification. If we could go back to you, Dr. Wertz, or Dr. Brown, if you're still around. We've talked a lot about, you know, what we all see as our serious problem in front of us, and that's the significant increase in the failure rate. We talked about doing the root cause and a, and a lot of what we were seeing so far. But, and this may have been covered, and I may have missed it, but my question is specifically this. Now that we have kids back in class, either through the hybrid period or now face-to-face versus the virtual, are we seeing the kids that were failing before? I've heard anecdotally from a couple of principals that having those kids that had chose... I've heard anecdotally from a couple of principals that having those kids that had chose in person and coming back in person and having eyes on that kid has made a difference. Have we seen that? Is that just anecdotal? Or have we seen evidence that for those kids who were struggling before when it was virtual only, now that they're back in person, if that's made any difference?
So we're actually, that's a really good question, one that we're trying to answer right now. What we have is what you just described as anecdotal information. Dr. Barlow's department is actually trying to, is in the process of running an analysis to try to understand of the students that were failing the last six weeks, how are they performing today? And the reason is the, the three-week mark of the six-week period just passed. So now it's, now we can actually dig into some of the grade books to see kind of where kids are. But we have not answered that question definitively yet. We're still in the process of looking at the numbers.
Well, and my following question, I almost hate to ask because there's not, if that does pan out to be true, that coming in person does make a, it turns out to be a significant tool for us to use, it's really not a tool for us to use because there's not like we can, unless we encourage more students to come back, there's no way we can force students who don't want, who have elected virtually to encourage them to come back. We're somewhat limited in that aspect, are we not?
Yeah, so students definitely have a choice. We give students a choice. But for example, if I'm an elementary student, I'm in a virtual environment and I'm struggling, we can encourage parents and inform them what their choices are and how their, how their students may be performing. But yeah, it is ultimately, right now, it's the parent's decision as long as we're offering both environments to choose to keep their child at home, if that's their choice. Our goal would be to try to figure out a better way to interact. We've talked about some students, for example, may need more time with synchronous learning. They may need more access in that way. And so that might be other strategies. We've tried to think about other strategies. We could try to mitigate, to try to mitigate the situation should a child's parents continue to keep them at home, but they're struggling in that environment. But yeah, we can't, we don't, we're not forcing.
Now, thank you for that clarification. I'd be curious to see where those numbers pan out once we do have a good data set that we can analyze to see if it is a, there is a correlation and a significant difference. And again, thanks for all the work on it. I know it's, you guys are putting in the hours and the one thing we've learned is, I'll keep it peachy version, pandemics are just blank.
All right, Mr. Will Banks. Yes.
I just wanted to make a comment on how much responsibility our students are having to take on. And I know our teachers are too, and I'm not trying to belittle that. But I had a student today who contacted me clarifying a date. He's a dual-credit student, so he's in high school, also taking college courses. And he said he wanted to clarify the date to make sure that he didn't miss it because not only is he high school and college, he also works and tutors his three siblings that are at home doing virtual learning. And I just thought, my goodness, it's a different world. He, you know, wasn't complaining, wasn't asking for anything, just wanted to clarify dates to make sure that he turned it in on time and gave me a little bit of background on his situation. And I thought, we have so many students that have had to really take on so much responsibility. And they're doing it. They're doing it, and they're doing it well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fowler, and I completely agree. And we do have a lot of students in our district in those same situations. Most of my questions, probably, actually, all of my questions were answered. But I do just want to say to Dr. Wertz and Dr. Brown, we appreciate the transparency. Please don't let any of our comments or questions make you feel differently. We need to know. We appreciate you letting us know so that we know what it is going to look like in the future. So thank you for bringing that information forward to us. Also, just one little comment, very similar to what you were saying, Mrs. Fowler. I was speaking with a parent, has two sons, straight A students, junior high. And they have been at home and currently are not passing their classes or making C. So the father actually asked the son, hey, what's going on? And his answer was, I'm just not applying myself. I'm too focused at home of things that I can do. So, you know, I, I know we need to dig down and find root causes, but I mean, some things may just flow up to the top that are just that simple. So once again, thank you for that presentation. Everybody is working hard and we see it. So thank you. Okay, we are now going to move back on our agenda to our open forum for agenda items. I believe Ms. Wendy is still in our holding pattern, so I will just repeat. Stated on the posted agenda, members of the public who desire to address the board regarding an item on this agenda are required to register by sending an email to the Superintendent of School Secretary, L. Benjamin, at AISD.net no later than 3:00 PM the day of the board meeting. Ms. Benjamin, do we have our requester registered to address the board at this time?
Yes, ma'am. We have Ms. Wendy Espino ready to speak to the board.
Okay. Wendy, I will start off with this comment. First of all, welcome. This is a routine part of the school board's agenda for regularly scheduled meetings. This segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to share their views with the trustees on items that are on the agenda tonight. It is not intended to be a discussion or a debate, and trustees will not reply to the speaker. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. Personnel matters are not appropriate subjects for open forum. You will have five minutes to speak. Mrs. Benjamin will notify you when your time is up, and please at that time end your presentation. You may start now, Wendy.
Mays, when she logged in, she also then disconnected. I'm so sorry.
Okay, is she going to try to log back in? She is currently.
She's trying to log in again.
Okay. We'll give.
Thank you for your patience.
Thirty seconds, okay. Okay, she's here. Okay, Wendy, your time starts now.
All right, I would like to start by thanking the board for their time and attention tonight. Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you, Wendy.
Oh, I'm sorry, I must be delayed. I hear the meeting. Let me go ahead and close that tab. I do apologize.
Okay.
Okay. Right now, our numbers are like a snowball going down a mountain. I am a teacher at one of our junior highs. We have already seen spikes in our cases in Tarrant County for the last four weeks. And at some point this fall, with influenza, pneumonia, and COVID, this growth is going to be exponential. And I know you guys have discussed both the isolation and quarantine and growing in that manner as well already this evening. I'm trying to skip over the things I've heard you guys discuss already. All of our dashboards are red. I have slowly watched as we were yellow with some red, then we turned fully red. And the Tarrant County Department of Health has advised for us to make a plan to return to virtual learning. Is that something that we as a board have already begun? Is that something that will be under discussion? I know we talked about what at a case-by-case or campus-by-campus level would take place or what those thresholds would be. But this may be much larger very soon in our community than just a case-by-case or campus-by-campus level. If we don't follow the recommendations of our health department, why are we consulting with them? We have to look back at the original order that didn't open schools last Aug-, in the August because we were trying to avoid a strain on our EMS and hospital system. Right now, we have 75% occupancy rate in our hospitals with 12% of those being COVID patients. There were 735 new COVID cases today. This is an ongoing problem, and clearly it's going to get worse. The waiver and TEA, that has already taken place. We are open. Opening of schools is taking place. I'm speaking only about the current and substantial rising cases and no one's acknowledgement of the severity of the situation. I do understand that TEA is the district's major funding source, and I've heard that losing that funding source isn't doable, but is putting the lives of students and staff at risk doable? Finally, ladies and gentlemen, I'm here for no other reason than a deep and genuine love and respect for all my coworkers and all my students. I love them as if they were my own children. This is not politics. This is science. This is data. And if we just keep passing the buck to blame TEA or the Attorney General, that's not acceptable. We have our own school district. We have local rule. We have a school board who governs our school district. And it is the number one job to put our health, safety, and well-being of all the community, staff, and students first. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you, Wendy. Okay, next on our agenda, there are items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda. Are there any items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none. Tonight, we will be considering the items listed on your agenda under consent items. Mrs. Moss.
Thank you, President Mays, trustees, Dr. Cavassos. We have one item on the consent items tonight that I will highlight. That is our purchases greater than $50,000 that are exempt from bid. We have three items that we're presenting to you for those. We also have five other consent items that we are bringing to you for your consideration tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Moss. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Motion for approval.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Hogg, motion. Mrs. Fowler, second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote. Mr. Will Banks?
David Will Banks, I vote yes.
Mrs. Walton?
Polly Walton, I vote yes.
Mr. Hogg?
Booby Hogg, I vote yes.
Mrs. Fowler?
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Mr. Chapa?
Dustin Chapa, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes. Motion passes in the affirmative. Now, we will move on to our next item, which is open forum for non-agenda items. Mrs. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding non-agenda items?
Yes, ma'am. We have Stephen Poole registered to address the board.
Okay. Well, welcome, Mr. Poole. This second open forum segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to address the trustees on any subject except personnel matters. This is not intended to be a discussion or a debate, and trustees will not reply to the speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. You will have five minutes to speak. Mrs. Benjamin will notify you when your time is up, and at that time, please end your presentation. Mr. Poole.
Good evening, Ms. Mays and members of the board and Dr. Cavassos. Earlier today, I emailed you an advanced copy of the teacher salary comparison that we're publishing on Monday. I wish I could be there with you in person tonight, but unfortunately, I had to email it to you. I wanted to say that y'all did a really good job with the teacher salaries this year, and it's reflected in the salary comparison. At year zero, we rank them at five-year intervals, beginning at year zero through year 30, and there's 32 area school districts that we compare. And at year zero, you're ranked fifth out of 32, and that's up nine spots from last year. At year five, you're ranked fourth. That is up 14 spots from last year. At year 10, you're ranked seventh. That's up 11 spots. Year 15, you're ranked eighth. That's up 11 spots. Year 20th, you're ranked seventh, and that's up 14 spots. Year 25, you're ranked ninth, and that's up six spots. And at year 30th, you're ranked 10th. That's up four spots. And if you look in every category, you are in the top 10 in the 32 school district, area school districts we compare. You made a commitment to teachers last fall after the budget process to really address teacher salaries and make it more competitive, especially in the middle years where you dipped. And you fulfilled that, that commitment. And this is the reflection of your hard work. But it doesn't end here. I've been doing this 20 years, and a lot of you have been doing this for almost as long. It takes effort every year to remain competitive, not only for teacher salaries, but all staff salaries. And that's where the VATRE this fall is going to be important because our community has an opportunity to weigh in and approve additional funds, which is also matched with additional funds from the state that's going to help not only with this year's salaries, but for many years to come to keep Arlington competitive. That is why this vote is very important, and I'm glad you did put it to the voters because so many other school districts around us, their communities have weighed in and have supported their school districts and their teachers. So I'm excited to see the results of this November election. I wanted to share this in advance of us publishing it Monday and say thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you, Mr. Poole. Okay, next on our agenda is superintendent's report. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays, and it's a very similar report to every board meeting. A sincere thank you to all our teachers and our staff at all levels for their leadership and their heart and, and work and dedication. I've been able to join some faculty meetings during the week via Zoom. They're all Zooming, their faculty meetings. We don't want them all together, so. And, and just sincerely thank the teachers. We've said it over and over tonight. But also wanted a special thank you to all the students that are at home learning and trying their very best in many, many areas. That, that's a challenge, as Ms. Fowler pointed out tonight. It's a challenge across the board. But a sincere thank you. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Any other school board reports? Okay, Ms. Secretary, do we have any items to consider?
Madam President, we do. I missed the first one. I can't read my notes. The second one was Mr. Hogg requested a list of what we are doing to relieve teachers of some of the, their duties or requirements. And Mr. Chapa asked for an analysis of the 2,000 or so students who are re-enrolling and kind of coming and going. But I don't, Mr. Chapa, you may have asked for something else at the beginning, and I don't, I'm sorry.
No, that's all I recall.
Okay, that's it.
Sounds good.
President.
If we read the minutes later and you think about it, do it then. Okay.
Hold on.
Yes.
Could you also add on your notes that, that I was asking about the number of students? Of the 337 students, how many of those can we see? Were they, did they get ill at school or were they?
That was at the exposure.
Is that it? Yes.
That's what that word is. It's exposure down here in my notes.
Exposure. Yeah, whether they think it was at school or could it be outside of school?
Thank you. That was the third thing.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Fowler.
Thank you, Ms. Secretary. Okay, it is 8:20, and this meeting is adjourned.